The logo in the window. Yeah, we put the logo in the window.
Okay.
We wanted to get a press appeal one, but it takes. All over.
Sorry. It's alright.
Yep.
Morning.
Good morning. I can start her.
Okay. Okay, call to order on this September tenth, twenty twenty four A and D committee meeting. And the time is.
May thirty two.
Okay, roll call. Got Monica. And Brian, Andrew. And our staff of Kate. Brad and Paul. We don't have any minutes to review. I think the last meeting of this committee, I wasn't even on it. So. I would say two, two, two. And um. We have.
I think I gave you my application for one forty President Street. Now this. But you're, you can keep that after the meeting. So a lady, I think her name is Janet, put an application for one forty President Street. It's a vacant lot that we have. And I guess we've had it. Heard rumors they ears or something. She just bought the building next door and she'd like to buy. Application and it's listed on her website. Let's get for sale. So I think we should. Encourage, I believe the full board to vote on it at the next meeting, but I think as it gets to committee is a summer. Okay, so I have the application, they might like to see it, but it's just a side lot.
Are she going to merge the properties?
I assume.
We don't usually require it. Usually the C will do it. We still propose this. We'll talk to them. It's a neighbor here to see if anyone's going. Before we talk to somebody else.
We haven't had any. Other plans for this lot, okay, but it's all.
Only twenty five feet wide. Or something.
Have there been a side lot?
Does that have adjacent to jets? Deal to the former guys, so it's been separate.
We actually had two motions previously, so.
Two holders on, on the side.
I think one of them was, but it wouldn't be this way. You know what I mean? You could win this. But it just never flows, you know, she bit on it and you proved it and.
I mean, I don't have any ideas what else we can do. You have no plan for it.
I only asked about a van adjacent to. Jackson character.
It's bordering two buildings, twenty five feet in distance. Think there are.
Seamus. Morning.
Morning, Seamus.
Go ahead.
At the speed, we're live right now online for the meeting. Here's the border back. President Street. Yeah, so I think the fewer vacant lots. Be in the more we have to be. Think it's a good idea.
I mean.
Courage and find lots.
We've got a restriction.
So I would say.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I love motions.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we sell the lot at a hundred forty President Street to the application that. From us, uh, with the restriction that the.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Did they already purchase the property next door? One forty President Street, yeah, bleach it even. Hi.
Okay.
Was the person next door.
It sounds like she wants this lot or there's she purchased that next door and then this will be her driveway. Driveway is a separate thing, obviously, given curb cut and everything else. I've worked hard.
Make sure that she doesn't. Well, we could certainly make that part of contingency.
And our committee here just brings it to the full board, is that right? And then the full board, definitely next week on the eight. She's followed up two or three times, I think she did say.
It seems to be in chat, but it didn't seem she votes.
So, um, I think we're on the number five. So.
You, um, have a second?
Everybody, four votes, yes, I guess.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. So the potential properties listed for sale, uh, this is just a recommendation. Jamie came in asking some questions, he just wanted to know about. And these four broke out. Decent developer could easily get to the finish line. Uh, so I thought that these. Sale. I think most of them were part of the legacy. Both of the bundles failed to give financing. Places, it's like buildings that can be finished pretty quickly, but need a responsible developer to do. I guess I'll go through the four, and of course, this is just up. For our discussion, it's not. For sale sign. Maybe we could, well, actually we can, I think. Full board, but three, two, one, five, Sixth Avenue, has sheet rock on all the walls, electrical, has a kitchen and bathroom, but I probably would say that kitchens and bathrooms need to be replaced. And, um. Yeah, I, I would say that'd be hard to shine that. But that being said, it's a two family that's almost ready for somebody to do a kitchen and bathroom model. Then you got two units housing up.
So this is, could this be a potential project for Habitat to get a home burn? They tend to like two families. It's already, I know it's spread in the remodel program, it's relatively easy to, to maybe.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I think, I think.
Little bit of like, you know, be told that, you know, this is a neighborhood that really shouldn't. Probably about ninety percent rental.
Yeah.
Um, so it certainly does. It's also an area that Habitat is in, I think. Just down a little bit is those double, the double units that.
Yeah.
Three, three family, basically two family, the first one by Tina. Love to give them an opportunity, especially if it's not a heart. Um.
She had said that they were. Two more on rehabs, but definitely if there's vacant, if they'd like to. Uh, so. What's that below? But I said, do the received.
And I know CDBG funding. CDBG funding initially has some money that they can allocate towards projects with Habitat. I, um, if we think of it, they continue like them. I just, I just know that this neighborhood is certainly something that has.
Yes.
If you don't care.
There's been plenty of people in these neighborhoods, just going through buildings, people asking. Best served in different types of people, even potential. You know, I'm not sure of the level developer that the people might want to buy, you know, so my point is just that. There's definitely desire. Habitat or whatever, so just regular. Desire to have projects. You shouldn't hold them on. If you're that close. So three, two, one, five, like I said, that one's got the sheet rock on the walls, seems ready to rock. New kitchen and bathroom and then at that. You'll have some other items, but I think it's. In a good spot for somebody to take over. And I think we have to get them on our website in order to work to sell that, that's sort of the first step. Redoing our website at the same time. We can get them on the website. And then we can get a new website, it can still be on the website, but I just wanted to at least get everybody's take on these four. Three, three, four, zero, Sixth Avenue is a building that, um. Again, it's the same sort of thing where there's no major issues with the building, meaning there's no red X on it. All safely through a whole thing, and it just requires somebody to come in and get the details back to normal.
That'll do, I would do.
Yes, and the, the last two, eight, three, four, eight, three, six River Street are three families, eight thirty. Eight thirty four is the same condition as three, two, one, five, sheet rock on all the walls, there's an old kitchen. Old bathrooms that probably need to be remodeled, parts of the walls and the structural, entirety of the buildings in good shape, probably electric wires might work. Somebody turned on the electrical jacket. But eight thirty four River Street, the lower number. No, the higher number, eight thirty six River Street is a complete gut down to studs, so that one's going to be a little hard. But I've heard. You know. Sort of discussion from this board that you guys aren't interested in going the full distance just yet, we're dipping our toes back into getting buildings into productive use, so we're partnering with other developers, so I said. There's no red X, it's completely gutted, there's nothing else to do but rebuild this building, so we could list it, certainly we won't get the same amount of money as. Eight thirty four River Street, but. It's ready to go, and there are two, two, three families with the common wall.
Sounds like between these seven buildings, like the three, two, one, five. It's a kitchen, bathroom, eight thirty six, sheet rock. But where is, when we say, okay, what are the building? Was an example of the technique.
Yeah, very question. So Paul's primary focus right now. We have two grants, LBI one and two, one is the. And so capital improvement money, we have one point seven million in the budget, fix up building. That's, we've been focusing our, taking the red X off of them. Daylight, structure, or foundation or roof, one of the buildings just needs a roof and they'll take the red X. So those are the ones that. We're trying to make them investable.
Yeah, but. There's nine projects currently in that stage, um, three buildings. You know, another one needs just a simple removal of a bunch of debris in the basement, along with the roof. Uh, another one needs a deck. Um, just again, to bring it up to speed, that's where the scope is right now, nothing above and beyond that, other than what's listed. Give an example of thirty two, uh, thirty. Thirty two, twenty nine, Sixth Ave. Um, it needs some flooring, not just flooring, subfloor, uh, just to make it safe to get that red X off the buildings again, since it becomes marquee. Not looking to, you know, take that building and bring it up to, you know.
To clarify, we're not looking to pick paint colors or. And we just got, um. I think that's what I've heard important, of course, you guys can steer us differently. Hearing that and trying to get stuff into productive use, I think these four would candidate, so at least get on our website and see if applications come in.
Thirty two twenty nine, thirty two twenty nine, is that the side lot or? You know?
No, no.
And, um, in the finals. They put out a margin paper, design cert. Parcel. I'm not sure whether it is, it's.
I think ME Studio might have done something, and I think there are a lot of them were surveys of the actual lot. I think there's work to break up eight thirty four and eight thirty six River Street. And I think that's all part of Legacy Cities. Of course. You know, we had that phone call and the two people that had the bundles did not. They had to get their funding from a certain person, certain entity through H, their partner of HCR, and they hadn't even applied. So a year went by and they were requiring. Money from the land bank in order to get those projects to fruition, and if we didn't have. Contracts executed by December first, there's a potential for us to lose that money.
Question, so though, um, on River Street, next to. We, there's that huge lot on River Street, just.
Eight seventy one.
Just north from. Just northeast side of the street from Jackson cards.
Okay.
Um, at one point in time, it's right next to where, uh, other. Other young at that property that the, that the land bank owned, did we ever sell those lots?
Big habitat. It's about.
It's interesting.
Eight thirty. Seems so.
Yeah.
Getting project plan.
Yeah, so there's four of these lots right here, they filled that in?
If, if it's on the east side of the street, then you're talking to Habitat project, it's right across, I think it's across from Sudan's house.
Yes, yeah, that lot, yeah, warehouse, they did. Oh, this is yours, okay, and apparently I haven't noticed it when I drove. So the original, the original plan was actually to connect that third, two fifteen, was actually to take that down and connect. To like make a like. Like a little skinny park.
Yeah.
Because those block is, that block is so long.
Yeah.
Um, so people have access to not only the park. Or the. That was here, that's the one that.
Yeah.
That was the original intention. Okay.
Yeah, there's four very nice houses.
So just, you know, housekeeping, Kate, if, if we wanted to put these on. Take a vote from the full board. Website.
Well, um, I think what is. Land back in fact requires all of our.
Yeah.
Advertise minimum.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think these are fine. Even, they were part of Legacy Cities, we shut that down.
Yeah, and so I think we would have to properly, when we listen to it. And. I believe based on the finer that. Or state law or programs, like a fourth housing or owner occupied. So, do we determine that?
Um, yes, and I don't want to have to share it.
You checked in a couple of times with the text that she did.
Okay, um, I would check in with her.
I mean, I would think we'd listen to market rate and then maybe have an application process.
If that enough, they'll read the land bank documents.
You don't have to list with the agent, it's just the one thing you feel that you could market, be the extra market. Because you will, she will. Be.
Yeah.
You're only going to. You might just be able to put it on the website, put it on your social media.
I read that.
Yeah, yeah, so really it depends, ninety one is. These two agents already might not be able to show, in which case, um. Uh, but yeah, you can call her and she.
Is our agreement with your realty agency?
Um, it's probably inspired. So, uh, you know, I think Sherry did a lot of. So I think if you stay back or if you're, but you couldn't, whatever.
I've heard people mention that. And giving somebody closer to charge.
It was, I think it was shouting before because.
Right, it didn't make like.
I mean, I, I know people who live in districts. State agents, they ask me about it. Um, is your, going back to your question a little bit, I'm trying to ask, I mean, how do we determine? Or decision, how do we determine?
Well, I think the values without. Without an agent? But we can pull tops, just like an agent, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, it's not that different.
Certain properties, of course, certain things, just like. Get a real estate agent.
Like a thousand dollar lot.
Yeah.
And they are still.
So I think with that information, I'll, I'll put all of them on the website, because they don't all have to present perfectly, but they should all be on it. And at least I can put them all on there, just listed, these are our properties. If they're done right or not, not a website designer, but.
We have, um, I know back in the day when. We did the, like, there was some assessment of each property, do we still do that?
Haven't done it.
Cause that was actually really good information, because it gave, I mean. Oh, with my experience on. You know, people would look at a property, you know. You have experience, you knew exactly what needed to be done, just, just after your experience, right? You know, but giving people an understanding of. You know, electrical needs completed, there is no HVAC, there's, you know, this is the actual condition, right, foundation work needs to be done, or, you know, whatever, there's no copper. Like, just so they understand what the building.
I always think the two words as is.
No, but, but understanding what as is, because then you can get, um, you can get a responsible there, right, so if they actually understand the scope, that understand it's not a five thousand dollar investment, this is like a fifty thousand dollar investment, then that, that gives an understanding, especially if they can't get in the building. So I know that was something that we've been done in the past, where we had somebody literally do a condition assessment and included that with the listing, so people actually think what they're.
Yeah.
Trying to.
Why that's important is eight thirty four and eight thirty six, I believe, I took back because somebody did not have the work that they could commit to it.
Really?
And it was foreclosed because they did nothing, because it was too costly. And I've done it normally too, but that's, but that's a huge problem, they, people don't know what they're getting into, and sometimes you don't until you open that door.
I think I want to do a little bit of caution here, because if we go and we spell out, let's just say, I have to go and work, what we think Brad and I or, or the board, um, that a building might need, we don't want to stick our necks out there and say, okay, well, that's it, and all of a sudden. Now the thing needs another forty thousand and something else. You know, we could make suggestions, these things may or may not need to be addressed, yeah, I just want to be careful, you know, for future, because someone could turn around easily, you know, a year from now, um, and not do any of the work and then come after us. If we're suggesting actual work, you know, we're saying, okay, it's going to need copper, it's going to need this.
So this is more of a condition assessment, like currents, currents, what is as is, right, what is as is, and it was an architect or, you know, somebody who went in and really kind of. It wasn't necessarily saying this is your school work, this is saying this is existing.
Your disposal, the condition.
Disposal.
Yeah, well, in the contract, they'll say that it's, and I do closing requirements. They can't come back.
Good.
I know we're all, you're, some of you are new to the process, but. But the, the, I would say that it's valuable because that has happened more than once, that people are in over their head and they don't know what to do when they sit on it. And that you never want to close on a property because they don't want to just hand it back. But there's a lot of mechanisms in place. And even in the. Contract as well. Um. Need restrictions, they would have to give it.
That, that's. Yeah. I think we can draw. Or the condition set. Checking boxes, like, is the power on? Is there? Is there, is the water connected past the meter, is there a meter? Certain things like that.
So I think huge.
Yeah. I think we can do that, and, you know, if the board prefers us to have TAP come verify the. They prefer that, we can do it.
We did, it was kind of like a. It's a laughing. They came in, it was like a landscaped little. Picture, like, you know, I mean, so we showed like the electrical. Like whatever that is, um, and it was also good for like stabilization, right, so we knew exactly what. The board needed to do, and the land bank needed to do, if we wanted to choose to stabilize, they gave you a kind of an understanding. And your investment.
So. Yeah, but I think you can lever, leverage all of our experience. And especially, you know, like, the LBI two program that Paul's administered right now, is in form, completely missing the fire. So it's a free assessment, they say we put the X because of the back debt. Yeah. So I mean, but, you know, I'm, I'm all for using TAP as well, but at the same time, I think. Some of the things. The electric stuff. We can check that box, it's like.
And, and these are all questions about how this things, as opposed to are, are we listing them?
So no matter what, we have to put the, we have to put them up on the. They are available, these are the ones that are available. You could even, no matter what, whether you're selling or not, all your properties need to be listed.
Yes.
So you could even say under development, right, or, you know, like, if it's, if it's property that you're, we're.
Land.
Right?
Is a term.
Right, you know what I mean, we can say land here, so, but every property has to be listed, no matter what, and then if you can, if you want to say for sale, you can put a red flag on it, say for sale, put per details, right? And then, I mean, I don't, unless it's changed, we didn't actually list a for sale price. Well, is that new?
Um. It depends, we listed with a realtor, we might, like, seven ninety one, we know we want. But I didn't want to get into the weeds. You should look at what. Value in the property was booked at, we acquired it. For instance, um, we should probably assess value, which is usually not. And then, uh, I know things that you do get, you do get. You have to do it, but that would be, uh. You know, if you wouldn't do it on, you know, a teeny little house or something, that would. Uh, it's really discretionary, but. I don't think we did. People, we were taking offers and we had. But you, you can do whatever you want.
The, oh, I was just thinking of the possible downside of not having prices. People see land bank and they think, I could say, and then, and we have to respond to every application and that's, you know, so forgetting that those applications for five hundred dollars.
Right. We informed the board, there is a house right near. Baylen or. And it, it was listed for thirty thousand, it's like, it's coming right down, it's not finished, leaky roof, you know, a single family, thirty thousand, it was on the market. There's the, the, the property I sent the board. The original board, Paul, before appointments were made. Uh, River Street for sixty thousand and it became pending, it, it's completely cluttered with stuff, you just didn't even know, you couldn't even do an assessment. So. If you go on Silo right now and you filter. Properties in short, under a hundred thousand, any condition, you're going to. Including the one I said.
One or two.
Right.
Because those are fast deals for, you know.
Sure, no, I understand, I understand that there's a bigger mission to the land bank, at the same time, we have thirteen buildings and some of them we've had ten years.
So, no, I mean.
You're not creating any house.
I'm not discouraging this process.
So there are. So there are, we have thirteen buildings or that?
We have thirteen buildings, so we have seven buildings we're doing. One building is seven ninety one. And then the other five are these four plus eight seventy one river.
Cause there's nine here.
There's vacant lots there. And then eight seventy nine, eight eighty one, one, two West Flender vacant lots. You have five, you have six listed on that page, or five, one, two, three, four, five, six listed on the page, seven, every. Ever. For banking, so that we can upgrade the house and stuff.
Okay, so one on two West Glen is a lot. Eight eighty one is a lot. Eight seventy nine?
Yep.
Eight seventy one?
Yep.
These are the ones on the corner. Oh, right, yeah, okay.
Eight seventy one's the commercial building. So we listen at market, you just answer.
I mean, maybe, yeah. I mean, the, the real question right now is. Isn't it just, are we going, should we put these up?
Or do we want to develop them further and try to get them finished?
Do we have LBI money left to do that?
We should, but we have seven other buildings that, once we get with them, we're gonna say question on the heels of that.
So we have seven buildings right now for the.
Yep. No, right now, we're spending about three hundred thousand to get the renexes off that they didn't stabilize, and then at that point, the board can decide what they want to do.
But those could. Wanted to, right, move forward for the development.
I think let, let it.
So let me ask you, the seven, the seven under the LBI project. Better projects tend to. Five listed here.
When you say better, there's more meat on the bone, we can do more. But these four that are listed are probably our most desirable.
Most market.
Well, but it's closer to the finish line. You could have ten units of housing in the city of Troy, within a year, and so all of them to develop. Is the seven that we have. Besides Planet Park, it's gonna take some effort. Let it park right.
Sort of are. That's where we should be. More money is into properties that wouldn't otherwise. And it's just deteriorating further, right, and they do, that's certain. That, if, if the, these four that we're considering listing this down. Are desirable for other developers, they are important. Then that, then I. Decision.
All the projects that are in LBI two right now are exactly that. Just to bring them up, just to a certain level, so again, you know, we have a covered roof, we don't have a foundation wall that's, you know, uh, failing. We have an entry and an exit for the fire department.
Yeah, we, could we get, um, and if you already did this. Status is what included under the seven, and even a note of needs are open. Um. I mean, I see what you're saying with like, say, just go back to thirty two fifteen, six and fifteen, kitchen, bath. But you said that. It's worth. Three, three, four, zero. Eight thirty four. Eight thirty four. Oh, at this point, if you want to move forward, we need to do a. It's a three units, you need to do like a plan with TAP, how to get three unit, you know, what do you want it to build out, look like that? Code, look at it, give us a picture, start it developing, installing rough and stuff.
Mm hmm.
So it's, the, the question is, how much forward do we want to do with stuff that's actually designed? Where are the bedrooms? How big are they?
Definitely, so. Our, something, it's almost more desirable.
I agree.
Covered up wall that looked nice. I mean, we're saying how.
It's, it's easy.
That's pretty much what you, I mean, I would think you have to figure that. I mean, your two biggest hurdles are gonna be, first, one's stabilization, and two, though, you have to go in and out of your circle. Well, you know, you got other issues, bowl, or you don't like the layout, or you want to start walls out.
Yeah.
You're starting. You know, starting from scratch.
So, I mean, the purposes of this meeting, I would say, every project needs to be upon the website.
Yep.
And then I would take these five, including E seventy one. Into for sale ban. The other ones I would put under development. Being stabilized, or whatever you want to put, or LBI two, however you want to put it. But I would definitely list these, if you want to get a comparable. Get the ten thousand, twenty thousand, whatever the number might be, a value, so you can assign value to it, or, you know? At least a purchase price, initial purchase. Price, then I would do that, and then, just, I would just, I mean, the first step is to get everything on the website. Label, whatever we have. Available, or maybe that's what you say, available now. Two, right, maybe that's the difference, so it's a little bit more. Booth sounding, right? Um, and just, I would do that, or even have two categories. Now. So like, buy properties, and then even the development site, you know what I mean? You'd have. Housing, and then you can have development. People know where to click, right? You have developers looking, and they want to look at these, you know, E seventy one. Vacant land, then they can click on that, if they're using housing, they could come this.
And just to clarify. The, the website is to a place, you've seen it, so we have two websites, one that I'm just keeping a flow all the way. Onto the one that's being designed.
It's almost done.
Right, it, it's almost done, so. So I, you know, I'll list them in a brawl sense of the address and what we're doing with them, just so that we're in compliance. I could also make other pages and make photos and stuff, but then it's just gonna all be redeveloped to the new websites, it's kind of.
Yeah.
You're spending energy on that, and, um.
Usually, I have seen it done. Once this thing is. It's called to the board. Present the sales, the purchase price, everything you've decided here, and it's pretty much, you know? It's to prevent them, tire board from doing this. You know what I mean? So it's teed up, and the board is basically saying, yes, we bless and we thank, we both yes. Uh, to keep hatching out, you know? Prices and stuff that board made.
Twenty thousand, no, it's sixty thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, that's crazy. So whatever comes out here, and then Brad will present the heating. I've seen it done, there's a picture, here's what the purchase price is, here, who not occupied. I've even seen it, you know, multiple or something, you had multiple on the property, and the committee wasn't sure which way they wanted to go. You know, you would say, we have these two offers, we want to occupy, wants this, which way we want to. The natural. But only if the committee is on that. So that's, that's the way it's been done in the past, as you know.
Okay, so we decide, basically, that's. Well, they have to be, the question is listed for sale. Be on the website. But it. The question is, are we, it also says either for sale. That's like, yeah, we didn't have term listed in this meeting on, and I don't know that we were always clear with which we, what we meant.
They all have to be listed on the site for.
Yeah.
If there's, there's not. You know, like the strategy or plan in place, I would list them for sale. If they're part of a bigger strategy, like maybe like this one by Troy Housing Authority, just that little, the lot, bigger lot, actually, with the commercial property. Then I would say that you hold it for now, and so we can develop. Like, some plan around it, how we're gonna offer it out, or what kind of partners we're seeking for that, for that work. Uh, but if it doesn't, if it's not associated with a plan, uh. Like, and I'm, I'm spoiled, because when the initial round of funding that we had to, we actually had to present a strategic plan. Of what we were doing with parcels, what was the community work that we were, like, we, there was a bigger. Thing, right, so, uh, but I think if there's no plan, I would get them up, and I'd get them listed.
Yeah, and for this site here, which is point six here, development site, average, except, the vision was sort of like, typically. You could put like two four by fours in the ground, and then the four by sixteen that says, development site available. You know, call here, whatever, you can do that, or you just put a website, be incognito at the same time, so. You know, there's some paths to go there. But I think it would be good for us to say.
And Troy, and Troy Housing has scrapped the whole family court thing.
The CDT, yeah.
What was CT, huh, but then they were also gonna try to get some on there, but then. Even, even habitat was kind of looking at it in version. That's step program, they can save money as part of the total to purchase. You're still looking, they're, they're good people, but.
And we have two applications currently for this site, but we don't have it listed, so we can't actually do much with. We don't have it listed on our site as available for sales, so we can't really process those applications too well, but. The two applications are one for table cleaning systems for some apartments, it also runs business out of there. And then the second one's for Joseph's House, put a family. Or a fam- I don't, family shelter, like, only people that have kids and husband, or. But, you know, like, a family where a parent and a child in.
It's a shot to Joseph's House now, it's a shelter, they have to. Like a. Kind of separation, but one, it's not true separation. They go mail, and you're kind of enabling in with family and children, create that separation.
So we had those two applications, and we heard from Joseph's House, but we have to do this step, getting it on the site.
And we get it on the site and then.
Yep.
I mean, workforce development is huge in that area, especially if somebody's.
So, are we, do we have an open motion on listing? On their.
Saying for sale.
Well, I motioned, or we, we motioned this made right. That we offer those for sale, the price to be determined following. One of the various processes discussed so far, providing prices.
I second that motion.
All we, just to be clear. I earlier questioned, pricing discussion.
The Brad.
Yeah, but you got the room to sit.
And we can listen about price.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay.
We're just, you're, I think you're making a motion. By the side, that's anyone.
I make a motion to appetize. Seventy one, you're one of two, one.
Eight seventy one, where? I have a picture.
Corner of the Glen River.
Okay.
Where the. Be a bar there.
Yeah. What, in the barber shop and the bar where.
Almost, yeah.
And those trees.
Cause all I'm trying to, we ever.
Yeah. Okay, so we need it all in favor.
Yeah, okay, um, all in favor? I, any opposed? Okay, motion passed.
On seven, I did put seven ninety one River Street, in case somebody wanted to talk about. I have much to discuss of that, except. Special meeting to discuss. Contractors and certain things, we can all, all speak over. It's a time. Again, yeah, we're waiting on a straight letter. That's the bottom. Everything else can be done at the same time. But he's been there. He's cut the sheetrock and he's analyzed, I think he's moving.
That's my concern.
Yep. Months or weeks, I think maybe a month, I don't know.
Okay, any old business? New business? Other business? So I guess that's it.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
The second. Make a rate, put them on the hallway, and it'll be on the right inside. Not trying to sell this, but please something, something.
I'm gonna say something.
Ended up baking all night, so you can tell.
Wow.
Thank you guys for entertaining this special one. It's funding. Spend, which is pretty good. It's probably, uh. How much interest and intent is it? Be the great deadline.
Well. Let's leave the donuts on the table.
Right here. There are extra those miners sent by. I had a feeling that you have second intention. Clicking around, trying to. And it's probably a possibility. If you don't have the desktop. You can't get the whole site unless you find the bottom. Any case, doesn't allow you to pop her up.
Oh, and I, I don't.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, but in the, in the effort to, Andrew's time, we could probably.
Okay. Uh, can we skip the? One through four? Okay. Okay. Calling the special meeting to order, September tenth, twenty twenty four, time is.
Nine nineteen.
Okay. Roll call. Monica, yes. Ryan, Andrew, Ben, and also Paul and Kate. Oh, I forgot James, I'm sorry. And, um. Brad. We don't have any minutes. So we can run right into discussion of LBI grant funding.
Yeah. So obviously, the goal of this meeting is to sort of exhaust. The end of the year, by way, executing some property maintenance contracts, if it's possible, on the page. After the agenda on your report packet, you'll see a box on the left, it's LBI draw for year two. We're in year two, it expires September twentieth. Our fourth draw, this is the fourth time I threw money out of it, is up to fifty thousand, but I haven't, fifty thousand, six hundred. Eighty six dollars, but I haven't finished that work, because if we can spend. The additional fourteen thousand, five hundred fifteen that's available to us, then we can do one draw. For the sixty five thousand, two hundred and two, and then we're able to. You know, do more things or get more done from our property. So I've got some contractors to give me some quotes, and, um. I put them on the site as potential added property maintenance items, and then I listed some of those items, or I believe most of the items on the agenda. You know, after the discussion.
This other one's up this week, because I know. There is no budget really adopted, so that's why Brad is asking. Normally you would adopt annual budget. He doesn't have that, so that's why he really misses it. Wants it to be comfortable as well. So. Normally would.
It's, I wanna say it's insignificant because, you know, fourteen thousand. Money, but at the same time, it is under, individually speaking, some of these things are under the, uh, pyramid policy that we have. And essentially today's special meeting, the goal is to appropriate eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars, or maybe more, so that way chances of spending exactly that amount of money is, is unlikely. Uh, so the goal is to just have an appropriation, probably like fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand, so that way we can exhaust that. Certainly, you can go as high as you want. But.
So point number five, you're making or at work.
Yes, yes. I, I'm just discussing the reason for, or why we would spend the money and what the board didn't appropriate. And certainly, my point is anybody can make a motion, say, I motion to appropriate twenty six thousand, eight hundred sixteen dollars expended and, uh, executive director, be necessary for the property maintenance. And that would just be aligned, but of course, also, we can do it line by line. It's up to the board, I'm just giving people.
So this, your goal here is higher than the available right on because it's possible some of these come in under and you want people to do more. Like, is that what you're saying?
It's possible the board doesn't want to make motions on those things. They don't feel those items. It's possible that, uh, it's possible that things might be under.
So do, do, I think what you're saying is the twelve thousand, no difference. Do we have that other funding in the land bank?
So on September twentieth, we get another two hundred thousand, you can make that money for next year's.
So part of this could be next year's.
That could be.
Okay.
But I don't have any, I don't have a budget for this year to the end of twenty twenty four.
So this is, so the fourteen thousand is what you have left over for this year?
For the grant award for this.
And then the twelve thousand dollars could potentially come out next year.
It could. I haven't drawn that budget and applied for HTR's grant for that, but.
So you, the fourteen thousand, seven, it's on the end of the year in the work year, September twelfth or?
September twentieth is there. So that was.
Twenty sixteen, sixteen, I get that for doing the drive.
That's just potential. You know, I, I'm more interested to see what the board wants to do with it. Of course, there's, you know, like, I can give you a four instance to give you more context, eight seventy one River Street is a development site that we wanna develop. Here's the pictures of it. There's a row of stumps here in various sizes that can't come out unless somebody digs them out. Do we wanna dig them out or let it developer dig them out? Twenty six hundred dollars. Twenty five, sixteen to dig them out. I mean, I'm either here or there, but I think the site will look cleaner and it would present better.
So you're really, we wanna, I, I mean, I knew the whole point that we did this was, you had some months that were under a timeline. But really, your potential property maintenance items here is for us, for you, maybe not necessarily a vote at this meeting, but just give any examples, we'll plumb that fourteen thousand.
Right.
We don't do stumps and we don't like that, right?
Yeah, yeah. And I think that we're not, I don't have a contractor for the electrical panel of the five buildings that we wanna, like, light up if we don't wanna do the program with the police department or get access to the security cameras for those things. I don't have that contractor in vote right now. And that plus the one above it for the sheetrock budget for seven ninety one, that's ten thousand dollars. That brings us to only a couple thousand over the total. So I don't even have something to write a check to at this point, so.
So the twenty, so see, for example, so you said you have the fourteen thousand, five hundred LBI. So because we're calendar year for the budget, correct?
The budget is calendar year.
Our budget is calendar. Their budget is summer, right?
Yeah.
So is there twelve thousand dollars in the land bank budget? Land bank coffers, let's say, that if we authorize this, you have twelve thousand dollars to spend before the end of the year in the land bank money.
The land bank has a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to dig.
Okay, so we could put forward a motion that says that we put forward a motion to spend the fourteen thousand five, exhaust the fourteen thousand, five hundred before September twentieth through these means and methods that you've listed out. And then in addition, prior to the end of the year, you could finish this work once you have contractors come to, let's say, thirty thousand dollars.
You could, that was satisfactory, maybe, yes.
Okay. I make a motion to do exactly what I just said.
Okay.
I, I have a question as well. Uh, just about the trees. So this is the development lot, like this is the big enough that someone could do a full, of like a full little brother.
I'm sure.
Okay. Cause I was like, just, I'm not, I'm not looking at a little skinny area between the house and tree, like.
We are all.
Okay, yeah. But like, I don't wanna spend twenty five hundred to take out trees, but I, you know, twenty's a lot.
It is huge. It's a really big.
I believe that if we don't get a developer on that site within a year, the trees are just gonna come back. But if we get the stumps out, the landscaper can just mow it. We can get it all in one year and it starts to look like.
Yeah, it looks better.
It starts to look, you know, maybe they do strikes at the baseball fields and then maybe at that point, people say they can really envision putting something nicer because it looks nice.
It would nice, it would be really good to give that.
And mine, can you quickly say what you just said? I'm sorry, I was texting.
Alright, so I said, I make a motion to authorize the executive director to spend the LBI money for the fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars before the end of the contract. And then I also authorize an additional funding to total up to thirty thousand dollars for the additional work to be pulled from the financial, the money to be pulled from the land bank again. Up to thirty thousand dollars.
Must be too different.
It's too terrible. You could probably just appropriate thirty thousand dollars.
And then, yeah, appropriation should be funded between the LBI money and.
Yeah.
They can do some.
Modifying my motion to say that I authorize, uh, that we authorize Brad to spend up to thirty thousand dollars in property improvements funded between the LBI money and the land bank.
And I would fund it right through LBI, year three, year two and year three. So we want to spend it out of our money. It'll all be reimbursed.
Okay, any more discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Not a time to vote. All in favor? We opposed? Motion passed.
We just put it on all three of eight, right?
I, yeah, that vote satisfies five, six, seven and eight because I don't need to get the appropriations since you just made a motion to appropriate all of them, but I'm certainly here for discussion. You know, you guys can also close the meeting if you want.
Just something.
I need the security camera.
We have, well, we and I have met with, um, the fire department as well as the police uh, when we had our meeting against ninety one river review building. And we were talking about these things and what we're gonna do, the reason why we want internet, obviously, is because. Cameras, so we're gonna share with the city, you know, our camera systems operation, just it's better for the neighborhoods, right? And it's a nice touch with the city. I, I think if we can help TPD.
Hundred percent.
With thumbs up, you know?
Doubling down on that program and trying to, you know.
Right. And for what literally cost the land bank, the good that'll come out of it will profit tenfold. What's that?
We should have an MOU replaced. So.
Then also, thinking about it, you were talking about the fire department, city one.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, that's our. The fire department's scheduled about the twenty third.
Yes. For the.
Twenty four, twenty six, to do a training in one of our buildings, thirty two Glen.
Right, and it's dry. It's gonna be a dry, dry system train, so. So it's not gonna be.
They're not breaking down the doors, right?
No, doors are already broken.
Doors, the doors are, but we'll, we'll be. We'll be there, we'll share, obviously, you know, um, key code for them to have access to that particular.
Yeah. And their windows are already broken. In fact, so they're gonna get the guys to pull the heavy line. It's completely full of water. They're not gonna let the water out of the building. They're just gonna pull it through and twist and turn. It's gonna be the fresh. It's definitely hard for them, but at least they, in a good, in a good way, they said they haven't had many fires this year. And so having a place to at least pull, yeah, to pull a heavy line through and go to the basement and they'll discharge the water out the window and then abort up any window, but they're all broken. Different things that have happened. So it's not really, there's no damage to the building and we're doing a service to the short fire department, which is good.
Sounds great. It's, you know, it's a bigger deal than I think. And back in the city can be. It'll take a little time, that's all. But see, good things.
Okay, do we have any old business? Any new business?
Yes. Two things I just wanna know. You will need a new project that you gotta be. Something with parents. And I think we were okay for last year because I uploaded just very basic thing. The second piece is, you wanna need to get done. About parents for last year. Coming up. Um, so I just, you know, I think your agenda depends too much on who's gonna do the budget and.
I've been working on the budgets thing. That's, it's not bossed on me on that. Um, and just to quick talk about the auditors. They've actually scheduled somebody to test us. They can't on the same day as their. They're like, yeah, we have a clerk that's gonna, when they say test, they're just, they're like. So I suspect that they are going to come back with, can you give them the checks? On these things. So I think we're going to have to.
We need it to.
So when you audit, you, you'll do, you'll, you'll take what the person gives you and then you say that this is for, giving me support. So they just tested us and asked the the, the hundred thousand dollars, that only thing, that's why I asked you for that. Is that they want to support that. They said they have another schedule to test on.
Make sure they introduce.
Yeah.
Well, they're gonna have to, yeah, they'll send you, they'll send you a doc, a draft. You'll actually look at it.
Yeah.
And then you'll have to. Writing like your your management letter, like your activities, anything that was prominent in this year, which is gonna be a little hard because and then you can talk about some, you can talk about the challenges.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Send you a draft.
You don't seem to be motivated. Makes me happy. It's been a couple of weeks of no information and then I asked them, hey, can you?
Hey, I mean, I know, one, I just want to. It was through the process. That's why you started in December. The number of transactions were very small.
Yeah.
And I think there's, I think they're trying to figure out. Because the real issue is large rules of the city.
Yep.
And, you know, I just don't, because, um, they'll give us a clean audit as far as the ends and the outset of the budget. But I think my two parents, my two sons, they're probably gonna have some. That's why I wanna see a draft before, you know, just, you know, any corrective measures. I'm just a woman without the. So that's, that's the like one on that. They haven't sent us a letter yet, um, but, you know, we really don't. I don't think we have this ever again, but, you know. So I just wanted to put those things on your agenda that. And then, you know, at the next meeting too, I think. Andy's gonna have some more cut on the bank. So those are just.
Dude, James, you know, when the, um, when the mayor's gonna put, we have the red next to us.
We have, I believe, we have at least one. There's one here at the city council, actually. So when first took over, I actually tried to figure out who was appointed by who, and I thought Jamie was appointed by the city council, so I thought the mayor had two appointments. And then Mayor Mantello emailed me and said that Jamie was appointed by Mayor Madden, so that means it's one and one. So the city council is another appointment. And the mayor has another.
So there should be four sitting, four mayor, four council. Two school districts, one by the.
And I've been keeping track on the website. Who appointed who?
Yeah.
And, um, they have twenty one one city and one mayor.
We got anything, any, any information about from Mantello or? Awards?
Um, I, Jamie Baker. He's actually for our.
And then is the five, sorry, five, two, so seven, who's the one that's appointed by the? Three, who's just year one? Okay.
So should we approach the city council or do steel and?
Yeah.
I'll reach out.
So I don't know that we, Brad, it's wrong.
Okay. So if there isn't any other business, is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We have returned.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
We do here for the.
We have a meeting, I have a city of all, but it's just a mini-meeting, so initially. Yes.
We're usually in the conference room.
Yes. But we do.